Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. Joining me are, I believe, all the members of the Planning Commission. Welcome, everybody. We have an agenda and a few really good topics to dig into, so we're gonna jump in. The first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. If somebody can make a motion to that, we can have a little bit of discussion.
Still move.
Second. Okay, moving. And I just wanted to say a couple things while we're waiting here. First, I was gonna thank everyone for bearing with us as we got through some growth pains as a new board and a new chair and getting our method squared away that clearly is still going on. So, thank you for your patience, everyone. I also wanted to say thank you to Pam, who's doing a really good job of keeping the wheels on the bus in terms of packets and details that I don't know about, but she's helping with. So, thank you to Pam for that. And one thing I'm learning new to this is the importance of the agenda, which is why I wanted to make this point first. The agenda really is the thing that defines all that the Commission can talk about in the given one meeting. And so, I will try in the future to be as defined as possible, as specific on agenda items, so that it's clear to people what we're talking about and and then the packet is really a bundle with the agenda. The packet, everything that's not in correspondence in the packet is wrapped around an agenda item. And then we set a deadline for getting things into the packet. And anything else that comes late will go in correspondence. And anything that's not on the agenda can be talked about in public comment period. So, anyway, that will be, that was a lesson I've learned and I will try to really be pretty snappy on the agendas going forward. The one thing that just as we, before we go into public comment, I wanted to make the point relative to the agenda, that on the Upper Loveland Solar topic, on the agenda, it is very specific to whether or not to reopen the preferred sighting letter. That's the topic on the agenda. So, that's what we're gonna talk about when we get to that agenda item. If you want to speak to that topic, but a broader statement around the Upper Loveland project, then that can be done in public comment period because that's not what's on the agenda. So, it's a nuance, but it's a very important nuance to keep us focused when we get to that agenda item. Okay? With that in mind, I'll call the question on approving the agenda. All those in favor? Chris? Just a sec. Chris?
Sorry, sorry to bring this up at this particular juncture, but it was brought to my attention that because we're a hybrid meeting and in order to comply with the OML, especially that we're having kind of technical difficulties, that when you do a motion and I think you have to do a roll call, so that when Jeff seconded made the motion and I didn't hear who seconded the motion, and I believe that as the Chair, I think, not certain, but just for our basis that you
It's a good, it's a good, it's a good, good discipline, Chris, and I do want any, any ideas and suggestions that make the hybrid work and especially the hybrid with a remote chair. So, certainly feel free to make those points of order anytime. So, I think we will get in the habit that the default can be roll call and unless I can see absolutely everybody waving their hands, we will do roll call. So, let's just do a quick roll call on the agenda. Bob?
I believe Jeff wanted to comment.
Jeff?
Yeah, Jan, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Let me try. Okay, so Ernie seconded. And I wanted to follow up on your comment about the agenda. To the extent that folks in the audience are here to talk about the solar projects outside of the question of reopening the preferred sighting letter, the only context for public comment is indeed in public comment.
Stuart?
So, the way, the way I gotta stay muted. So, the the way
I can't hear you, Stuart. At all. Sorry. Do we wanna, is do we have that door open? I mean, if Vince has got the door open, I would propose we give Vince five minutes to set up and then we kick this into gear because otherwise we're gonna frustrate ourselves.
I think I just saw a thumbs up.
I saw a thumbs up. We're gonna, we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a three-minute technology break and come back with everybody muted and the big screen and microphones working. That's the plan. Thank you all for your patience. No pressure, Vince.
I don't know, Stu, I think you look better on Zoom than in real life. That's what I think about myself, too.
Something you have no control over. So, so Jan, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, you know, you, you thank, you thank those here for their patience and their help. And I just want to return that compliment to the Chair for undertaking what is not that easy a job and it's extremely time-consuming and, and to some degree difficult. So, you know, I voiced this appreciation previously and I just want to make sure that it is understood. So, thank you for doing what you're
Thank you, Stuart. I'll we're all in this together. Let's see what we can do, but
I second that motion, by the way.
Well, let's
Not a motion, not a motion, I second
It's not a motion, but
I second his comments.
Consensus of the group, okay. Now, we're talking. That looks like high-tech right there. All right. So, I assume that means other people can mute. Can people hear me out of a bigger speaker? I'm not sure if I got a yes for that. I can see the room. All right, do we have lift off here?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, you can hear me and there's no echo? Jeff? Stuart, everybody? All right, we are back in business. We are in business. Good. Thank you all for your patience. Now, we will start again. I'm gonna take a roll call vote on the motion to approve the agenda. Chris?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Vince?
Yes.
Ernie?
Yes.
Jan, yes. Okay. We've got an agenda. Public comment is the next item on the agenda. Four items not on the agenda. John Kuschman?
Thank you, and I understand that this is my only comment on this subject matter during this meeting. You may remember that I was the Chair of the Article 36 Task Force, which provided advice to the Select Board about addressing the climate crisis. We met in public for almost a year and reached all of our recommendations by consensus, unanimous agreement among the members, one of whom is a member of your Commission. I'd like to talk about one of the recommendations that we made, which is that when the Select Board or any town body makes a significant decision, we should publish a climate impact statement, which gives our understanding of how this decision affects our responsibilities toward meeting our climate requirements or climate policy requirements. This is a very simple idea. And while our Select Board has never endorsed it and our Select Board has taken no actions to carry out the Article 36 recommendations, I would urge the Planning Commission, as it considers the solar project on Upper Loveland Road and what steps it might take to view this as a significant decision and therefore to be prepared to discuss the climate impact of this decision. If you need help in working the numbers, because you might sometimes the trees being cut down offset the gains from solar panels being built, there's an extensive scientific peer review discussion fairly on the side of to address the climate crisis. Please, as a, as a Planning Commission, take your climate responsibility seriously and be prepared to expressly tell us what are the climate impacts that you expect from your major decisions. Thank you very much. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Thank you. Other public comment? Michael Binder?
Hello. I wrote a letter to the Editor of the Valley News, many of you may have seen, pointing out that the rules for the PUC and preferred sites are changing. They've submitted the rules for final adoption. And I want to read three sentences from this 30-page order of the Public Utilities Commission. So, beginning now is a quote, "In recent years, the Commission has been concerned about the amount of forest that has been cleared to make space for certain large net metering projects on preferred sites. When it originally adopted the preferred site incentive framework, the Commission intended to ensure that the very largest ground-mounted net metering systems between 150 and 500 kilowatts were sighted so as to have minimal environmental impacts. However, because the preferred site definition lacked a standard addressing forest clearing, projects involving as many as nine acres of forest clearing have received certificates of public good and the attendant preferred sites financial subsidies," end quote. In the same report, Vermont's Agency of Natural Resources provided data that between 2017 and 2021, the vast majority of net metering projects, 86% of projects, involved either no forest clearing or less than three acres of forest clearing. I think that this project clears over eight acres. It would not be allowed under the new rules. The Commission never intended for this amount of forest clearing to get a certificate of public good, and they're changing the rules, so in the future it won't. I think that you should keep that in mind when you consider the climate effects on this project and the degradation of the natural environment. That's all I have to say at this time. I will speak again on Jefferson Salamanders when we get to the item four on the agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have, I've been remiss on the one habit that I think we will try to do as the Select Board does. So, when when people speak, if you would just say your name and the town you're from. If you're, especially if you're a Norwich resident, let us know. I see, I see a hand.
Yes, joint heads joint heads, it's Norwich resident. We had sent a letter to the Planning Commission and the enclosure is a chronology of the preferred site letter process. And I just want to make two clarifications, very brief. Is that all right or not? Can I do that at this point or should we
If, if it is related to the reopening of the preferred sighting letter, then we will have an agenda item to that topic, but it's it's the next item on the agenda, so I don't, or you can make you wanna, you can wait and it sounds like it's pertinent to the agenda item.
Yeah, okay. So, you want me to speak now? I'll just say, just two clarifications. The images in that chronology are, some of them are labeled, have got letter labels, A, B, C, and D. Those are not the labels that were given to them by the Norwich Solar Technology Company. It is labels that were assigned to them. It was just a shorthand and an easy way to make reference to them rather than keeping repeating these longer descriptions of each, each site plan or each map. So, that's what those were. I just wanted to make that clear that everybody understood that. And then the other point is that the final image, which is Troy McBride's sketch, where he's, you have two maps, one superimposed or one plan superimposed on the other. It's a blue area. It's in the, in the middle of that. He calls it a sketch. And I have written next to that, the image of the sketch represents two plans, Site Plan D superimposed on Site Plan C. That's not quite correct because it's probably, it looks to me like a sketch for what would be that final plan, what we've called Site Plan D. It's not the final produced map, but it's, it shows the changes that were made to the that draft, that Plan C. And so, one is, you see, the, with the dark line with white dots on it. And so, they're just these two different sketches. It's just the differences between C and D that show the results of the Arrowood data. That's all that is. But because probably speaking, isn't that final D that was imposed on, that final, that D that was imposed on there? Just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Let's move on through the agenda. Thank you, everyone. The next item is correspondence. And we have the one that is just to mention and it's listed in the agenda is the letter from Hennessy on a solar project on Bragg Hill Road. Just to be clear, that is a pre-application notice. There is no action required by this group at this time. That is a project that if they want a preferred sighting designation, they can, they will send an official request for that at some later date. So, that is, that is simply the, the beginning of a process and that's why it's in correspondence and not an agenda item. There are also in the correspondence a significant amount of material that came after our Wednesday noon deadline for the packet. So, we can't necessarily be sure that people have officially and had the time to look at that stuff, but we I worked with Pam on Monday to get it all in an addendum so that it is attached to the meeting notes in correspondence. Any other comments from the Board on correspondence? Jeff?
Yeah, Jan, as you know, Peter Gregory sent to us proposal to assist that I would like to ask you to forward to the Commission to discuss.
Okay. Will do. Yeah, we have under the Planning Commission Work Plan Agenda Item Six, Jeff and I will report on a conversation with Peter Gregory about possible help from the Two Rivers Regional Commission. Anything else on correspondence? Okay. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the Upper Loveland Solar Project. And the question on the agenda as to whether or not the Planning Commission should reopen its designation of a preferred sighting letter. Let me, can I make, you have something specific, Stuart, or I had a, I had a couple opening comments to frame the question? Do you want to?
Make your opening comments and then I would like to be recognized.
Okay. So, I think the and I must say that I spent, I've spent a great deal of time on this topic over the past few weeks. And I have read a vast amount of the documents that are on the PUC's site on this. I have met with our Town Council. I met with Jeff, with the Regional Commission Executive Director. I had a long talk with the Chair of the Select Board. So, I'm really trying to come at this from a place of, of understanding both sides and having, having caught up with as much of the material as I can. And I think the, the thing I wanted to get people's understanding, because it certainly helped me, is the the understanding of the municipality's role in permitting these projects. You know, Vermont is attempting to reach some very aggressive, ambitious renewable energy goals. And some of that is, is encouraging the use of renewable energy. The permitting process for large solar projects like this is primarily the responsibility of the PUC. And then the state, state law gives the towns specific and limited role in this permitting process. And to, to a vast degree, that is through the application of our town plan. It is taking the town plan and comparing what's in the town plan to aspects of the project. That is our town's influence, is doing that comparison. And so, the vast majority of the activity happens at the PUC and the town has this leverage that comes with its plan. And so, I think the question we're talking about is not reviewing the whole project, but the question of can we reopen the preferred sighting letter? And as a result of all the conversations and reading that I've done, for the sake of starting the conversation, I would say the answer is from my observations, yes, we can reopen the topic. That is within our power. But it has to be for good reasons and specific reasons. Something must have changed since the application was completed. That new information needs to be reasonably likely to change the outcome. And then the conversation has to be within the purview of the Planning Commission, which gets back to the, how does it relate to the town plan? And is there something in the town plan that relates to those changes? We cannot open it up for arbitrary reasons. So, that's, that's a little bit of introduction. I hope that, that helps put us in the same place. With that, I would like to open it up first to the Commission and then we will take public comment. Stuart?
Oh, I, can you mute? I am your
Turn the volume down.
Oh, is that any better? Okay, the wonders of technology. So, I, I think that given the amount of information that's been provided by not only the neighbors but also by Norwich Solar Technologies, that it, we would be remiss if we did not reopen this and try and make a rational decision about whether this really is in the town's interest. And as far as reopening, I'd like to make a motion that we do reopen this and that we hear about the specifics of this project at a special meeting two weeks from now. That's my motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's, is that Ernie that seconded?
Yes.
Okay, we're we have a motion and a second that's on the table. Jeff?
Yeah, in terms of discussion, for, for me personally, I don't I don't know how to simplify what I'm thinking. At the time, the Planning Commission looked at this project, I think the Planning Commission and staff reasonably said the one criterion that governs how we view this relates to essentially ridgeline considerations, and that's how the Planning Commission looked at it. And I think that was appropriate based on what our town plan says. I expressed concerns about the town plan at the time and leading up to that time and in that context, offered concerns about the, the Planning Commission's conduct and the way the town plan had been formed and the need to relook at the town plan to consider things like other environmental concerns. And on that basis alone, I abstained from that vote. Everyone else, including Ernie, who's the only other person on this Commission who was there, voted in favor of the motion. Having said that, looking through myriad documents, I personally, and by the way, I would declare myself as an expert with respect to plans for 40 years almost. I don't see any change in the application paradigm that's been offered. The question for us is, is there a criterion in the town plan by which we may reevaluate this project? And I don't see it. So, I think it would be remiss for this Commission to reopen this discussion, reevaluate what has been done previously. I, I, I would say more than remiss. It would be totally inappropriate from my perspective.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Chris?
Oh, okay. So, like you, Jan, I have now pored over so many documents and being I'm very involved in the town, but on this side of the coin, it was kind of new to actually engage in reading that many documents, especially with the 248 hearing, which I was relatively familiar with. And my concern and, and you're, what you had opened this discussion up with, I think was really well-stated. And the only exception that I, or what I would want to add to that is for all the times that I have now looked at a municipality's responsibility to either deny or forward a preferred site letter, it seems to me that the criterion is not obvious to me. And, you know, what is that, what meets the definition? And I'm gonna take it one step farther. I do have, I do fundamentally agree with, you know, the PUC has, unfortunately for us, has done exactly what Jeff has said. The town plan and the zoning regs aren't worth the paper they're on. Because if anybody read that, they said our maps are out of date, our regs are out of date, they don't hold up to the statutory whatever, the Cheeti test. And I find that extremely unfortunate that we're in a predicament where following the 248 review process, the town of Norwich has found themselves in an incredibly, incredibly difficult position right now. So, my concern right now is that the PUC has kind of done our work for us, that we're not even close to being able to pass the Cheeti test, which I think is incredibly unfortunate. But I still I still, with all of the research I have done and all the other towns who are going through the pressures of whether they deny or forward a preferred site letter, seems to still be a bone of contention for a lot of towns. So, I did find out this weekend, reading through that when somebody's going through a preferred site um, discussion, that you can actually get somebody from the state to actually come down and join the meeting, which I'm sorry that hadn't been done. And they probably could have joined this meeting, which I think would have been very helpful. So, again, I'm going to restate my problem. My problem is that I don't know the criterion is if the PUC has already told us that our town plan is useless. I'm not sure what the, and our maps are outdated and the regs don't keep up with it. And we don't pass the Cheeti test. Then I'm not sure what a preferred site letter is based on. So I guess I'm still in a position where, whether we open this up or we don't, we're still back at step one. What does it take to either start a new process or look back at a process because our town plan doesn't support a good preferred review, preferred site review? I hope I made sense, but.
Uh, yes, that was, you did, uh, Jeff? And I can't, I can see everybody but Ernie, so if you stick your hand forward if you want to speak, Ernie. Or, other than that, I see Jeff.
Yeah, so uh, I, 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 I don't agree with Chris in the context that our town plan and our regulations aren't worth the paper they're written on. That is simply not true. The fact is that we have a town plan and we have regulations. They are what they are. It, it is, from my perspective, factually true that our select board, from uh, folks like John Pepper to Roger Arnold as chairs, Claude Ebro, Brochu as chairs, and our planning commission in the last five years, al- along with, I'll say staff, uh, I'm not sure which way to frame this, have created this situation that we're facing, which is our town plan does not allow us to look at a project like this outside of the context that the Planning Commission reviewed uh, the application for preferred sighting in the letter. And sitting here today, even though I might entirely agree with the abutters and the concerns that were expressed, and I abstained from that vote, today I would not reopen that vote because I think the Planning Commission made the right decision based on what our statutorily appropriate town plan and regulations say, whether I agree or disagree with them or not.
Okay, Stuart?
So, I, I really have to respectfully disagree with what Jeff is saying. Because whether the town plan properly addresses what I think and what other people think are the proper environmental considerations, whether the town plan does that or not, we know that steep slopes are important. We know that maintaining forest integrity is important. We know that we need to have a separation from water sources. Now, whether that's true in this instance and whether, whether Norwich Solar has done that or not, I think we need to look at it. I think that we need to, from a rational point of view, we need to evaluate that, ir- irregardless of what the town plan says. We're here as a planning commission to make decisions that benefit the town and benefit the state. And if we have a project that does or does not benefit it, i- i- it needs to be evaluated. I think that we would be remiss, again, in not reopening this and looking at it from an environmental point of view. So, thank you.
Chris?
I'm just going to respond with, with Jeff said and, and why, again, I think we're saying the same thing. Even though I might have been a little bit more harsh by saying it's not worth the paper it's written on. I want to put this in layman's terms. Uh, there are a group of residents who actually read that town plan and their interpretation was we have a ridgeline protection overlay. And the PUC kind of slapped us and said, it's outdated, it's from two thousand eight, and it's only a draft. Now, that's why I sent my emails asking if there was actually an official copy. So the PUC basically, basically came back to us and said, well, that looks great in your town plan, but it doesn't mean anything. So I go back to the criterion that says, okay, the average layperson is going to say, wow, I'm really glad that the town plan protects me from this kind of stuff. And now it turns out that the PUC is going to ignore it because the specificity in that particular paragraph doesn't apply. So then I go back to the preferred site letter. These, nobody could pass the Planning Commission review or the Select Board review in a preferred site letter. And again, I'm not quite sure what the criterion was. If, if our own talent town, if, if we can't even review our own town plan in a preferred site letter, how is, the, the PC is going to ignore it? So, I hope I'm not, I um, I'm still having a very difficult time understanding why the PC felt that this particular plan could either be, on what basis could that have, Jeff, maybe I'll ask you. On what, what basis, based on the town plan or our regs, could this plan have been denied? Is my, my question is that it, it seems that most towns are almost forced unless they have an enhanced energy plan. Most towns end up in legal battles over whether or not they deny or forward a letter. So I guess my question would be, let's go in reverse. What in our town plan would have created a denial of a preferred?
Let me, before your answer, Jeff, let me try and then you can augment, um, and I, I see a hand raised in the public. I'm gonna hold the conversation in the commission for a little while longer. Um, I think my, my reading, Chris, from looking at the plan and reading, you know, three different aesthetic impact statements that are, you know, all referring to the same town plan and coming up with different interpretations is that our town plan doesn't have the specificity required to do a job, to do its job, uh, to say, uh, here's what a steep slope means. Here's what development means. Here's, you know, i- it, it develop, does development mean cutting a tree? Does, you know, it's not defined. So when it's vague, it is uh, not able to help us because to, to Stuart's point, and I, I must dis- disagree or at least point out the legalities that I pointed out at the beginning. Um, it is not within this group's power in my estimation and from talking to town council to uh, go outside of what state law gives us the power to do, which is take our town plan and compare it to this project and see where it lines up. And that's where a vague town plan becomes a pretty weak instrument. Jeff?
Uh, Jan, I agree with you, uh, and I, I want to uh, agree first with uh, uh, so I want to use this as a teaching point for us perhaps going forward because while I agree the town plan needs to be revised, uh, we are obligated by law, by the BSCs, to adhere to the town plan. So I'm not willing to, to make a vote that takes us outside of the law. Having said that, uh, to answer Chris's question rhetorically in addition to what you said, uh, it is my perception, and I'm guessing that Ernie might agree, that since he's, he's been on the commission with me, we've been faced with a presentation of documents from a staff member for an up or down vote with almost no input along the way that has facilitated the current town plan and where we are as a commission and a town. So as a teaching point going forward, I would say if there are objections to this project hypothetically, uh, then we should embrace those with respect to our agenda going forward as far as our working efforts to address the town plan and other regulatory considerations. But those are things that we're looking forward to. I do not believe that we can look back based on a legal, uh, frankly, the law, uh, uh, and, and where we've been with one criterion relative to the, to the ridgeline considerations.
Okay. Okay, let Chris and then uh, Ernie uh, and Stuart, and then we'll go to the public.
Um, so, I wanted to know if there is another avenue, rather than Stuart's motion to just reopen it or rescind whatever. Uh, my understanding is that it is not out of the purview for a planning commission to um, request an amending of a plan. And I don't know if we're, we're in the process, if it's too late. And that to me is kind of a compromise to, I, I personally believe in compromise. And in one respect, I totally understand where N S T is coming from, because I think they understood our regs and our town plan a lot more clearly than our residents did. And at the same time, I wouldn't mind compromising with the residents who are um, very frustrated with this because I'm extremely frustrated in understanding that, that we have these difficulties ahead of us. So, I'm wondering if, for example, um, the forest block is the one thing that when they did the Cheeti test, that they did fail the Cheeti test, that there was too much of a forest block. And I'm just putting this side hypothetically, because I really don't have a good grasp on it. Is there any reason why we cannot negotiate and not reopen, but at least amend it and start trying to at least say, okay, the, you know, maybe the plan could be amended a bit more as opposed, just instead of being so black and white. I'm afraid we're going to get in a position of being very black and white on this subject. Um, and so if there is a possibility where everybody can just sort of work on a compromising level, I don't know if it's even possible.
Yep. Okay, so let's, let's hear from Ernie and then Stuart, if you can keep it, uh, keep it pithy, we'll have time for the public and then we'll wrap back around to the commission. Ernie?
Um, I, I just have a sort of simple concern, which is there's a, a fairly it, I'm going to call it sizable relative to the number of people that ever talk about any particular subject, uh, in front of the planning commission. But there's a relatively sizable group of people that are concerned about what's, what's happening here. And, you know, would like to have some sort of input, they'd like some sort, I'm not going to call it exactly redressed, but something that responds to their concerns. Right now, um, from their point of view, they're, they're being ignored. Um, another issue that I'm a little concerned about is there's the discussion of, of, of cutting, you know, considerable acreage of trees. Um, and I'm not sure if this particular lot or this area is, is part of a forest block, but if it is, I, it's never been discussed. And that's an important thing that has to be discussed. It's even in our town plan as well. Um, it's also a part of statute, uh, that forest blocks have to be kept intact. Um, so I'm concerned of that. There's a couple of issues that have to be still, I don't know if they have to be readdressed or, or, or how to handle it. I'm, I'm just concerned that, that we're if we just don't do anything and just let things proceed without any, any any um, con- consideration of, of what the, the townspeople who are concerned are asking. I think we're not doing our job.
Yeah, I, I would point out from the extensive reading at the PUC site that there was certainly a fair bit of conversation around forest blocks, uh, forest habitats, deep slopes, all that, you know, I, I think if, if, if people want to peruse that site, you would see that every topic we are talking about, have talked about, would even conceive of talking about, has been uh, put in front of that group and, and talked about at great length. So I, I, I do want people here, and I said at the beginning, the PUC is the, the central place where these, this permitting happens that uh, that activity has gone on in great length, that what you're looking at in our discussion is a miniscule fraction of what went on at the PUC. So Stuart, if you have anything to add, and then we'll open it up to the public. Oh, then.
Oh, sorry. So, I think, I think that Ernie has made some uh, some valid points, and I don't doubt what you're saying, Jan, that this has been discussed and reviewed from a lot of different but none of those people live in Norwich as far as I know. And we may have a different thing. And I, I revert back to what I've said a couple of times already, which is you have quite a group of neighbors who are concerned, who have expressed their concern. And I, I just don't think that they should be ignored. And I think that reopening this is not to say that we're going to change anything. I mean, the ability to talk about something, if, if we just simply slam the door and say we're not going to talk about it any, any further, or we don't let it stand, to me, that is just absolutely wrong. So, and that's the reason that I made the motion. So, thanks again.
Okay, I do, I do want to let Vince speak, uh, since he hasn't said anything on this yet. Vince?
Uh, I just had a question for you in your opening statements. You mentioned that you believe that it is the PC, in the PC's uh, ability to reopen this. And I think that's what really the question is right, right now. I, I think everyone could get bogged down on the uh, going one way or the other on what, what the outcome would be, but you mentioned uh, that, that you believe it can be reopened. I was wondering if you can elaborate on uh, some what sort of evidence you found.
Um, so specifically, and actually I think it was Stuart that put the, that paragraph into the minutes that he sent to you Vince that got put in the minutes, which was a, a, a PUC, uh, I believe, recommendation by a hearing officer, but the point was, and it's, it's, it's somewhat common sense in the sense that if it was absolutely impossible to reopen a preferred sighting letter once it was granted, um, it, it provides a terrible incentive to get all the facts up in the, in the first place, that, that, you know, you if, if an applicant knew at the beginning that there was nothing that could be done to reopen this, it, it would, it would close the door. It, it's just a bad incentive. It's, you know, not, not yeah, talking to anybody's motives, but the statement made by the PUC hearing officer was there, there must be an ability to open this, given then that list that I made before, something substantial that has changed, that has the uh, reasonable likelihood of changing the outcome, that is within the legal purview of this group to look at. And so, yes, it can be changed, but it has to hit each of those three points uh, in, in my, in my observations. Does that answer your question, Vince?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, I am gonna open it up now. I have, uh, Brooke. Oh, I'm sorry, Ernie, one more thing?
I, I just wanted to sort of sum up what, what my understanding of what you just said is, because it, it's in every single sort of um, process, um, legal process, uh, whether it's, you know, criminal, civil, whatever, um, environmental, there's always um, an appeal process available to somebody. Um, and that's, I guess I'm a little stuck on the, the idea that there's, you know, well, maybe there is an appeal process here, and maybe that's what you were just talking about. I'm not quite sure, because it sounds like there's no appeal process from what we've done. And that sounds kind of hinky. Um, usually, like I said, there's always an appeals process from any, everywhere that makes a decision until you finally get through to the Supreme Court. That's about the only place that it really ever appeals ever again. Um, and I'm not talking about taking things to court or anything like that. I'm just saying that, you know, for every, every administrative judge, a judge's decision, which essentially PUC is kind of an administrative judge, sort of, there's always an appeal process, which is some level of either a court or another, another board or something like that. And same goes for a planning commission too. So, you know, we made a decision, but is, you know, there are I'm not quite clear that there is no, nothing that can be done. You know, in terms of maybe the select board has to overturn what we said or something like that or I'm not quite, I don't know what the process exactly is, other than there's always has to be an appeal to any decision that's ever made.
Chris, can I, I'm I'm wanting to open it up and get a few more voices in and then back around. Do you? You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I was just gonna, okay, go ahead. Okay, I just was, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so just for the for the public comment, we know we've talked about the item that's on the agenda. That's what we'd like to limit the conversation to. We also have essentially 200 pages worth of packet material that people have read to some degree, so I would ask people to summarize their position and be available for questions rather than restate big pieces of things that are in the packets. So with that in mind, Brooke?
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm Brooke Dingle Dean. I'm a resident of Randolph. I am an attorney with Valston, Jacomo, DeTore and McQueston in Berry, which is underwater right now. And I represent the neighbors who are at the P U C. Have been helping them on limited bases because it's very expensive for them to participate up there. What I want to talk about is the process and to sort of echo what I I I have some concerns about you folks understanding exactly where this situation is in the process before the P U C. No decisions have been made. The state has not said in any decision that the town
Order, may I make a point of order?
Yes, Jeff, point of order.
So the agenda item that we're talking about is whether we reopen this, which has nothing to do with where the P U C is. So if we can, if we can focus on specific issues related to how we may or may not reopen this agenda item, then let's focus on that as a point of order. I don't think any other testimony should be received.
Can we?
Want me to respond to that?
I if, well, I would, I agree with Jeff from the point of view of the agenda item. I don't know exactly where you're getting to with your with your point, so judge it.
If you could bear with me just a moment, all I'm trying to make you folks aware of is that no decisions have been made at the P U C. And that is one of the reasons why the neighbors are coming to you, asking you to look at this again. And the reason why they're asking you to reopen this, and this goes directly to the agenda item, is that there are two issues here that the planning commission needs to look at. One is the facts and one is the law because you indicated what has changed, if anything. And what has changed is the facts that were put before the planning commission in terms of the site plan that was a prior site plan. Instead of the one that was produced three weeks before they came to you and talked about Plan B, not Plan C. And they gave you a view shed analysis for Plan B. The very next day, they filed Plan C and you guys never saw that plan. That is a fact that you based your entire decision on was a view shed analysis that said, we're not coming anywhere near the ridge line. You can't see it. It's invisible. Those are not the facts. And you gave them a preferred sites letter and they ended up putting the actual site 170 feet closer to my client's property spilling over the ridge line edge, clearing the tops, the trees on the top of the ridge. That needs to be looked at again because what they got a preferred site for has changed. It is no longer the site that you looked at and approved. It's a different site now. The other thing that has changed in a sense is the law. Because you folks were misguided on the law that you were allowed to even review or apply here. Your entire town plan was relevant. Your zoning ordinance was relevant for the ridge line protection district. That overlay district is is not a preferred site, nor is the the hazard area, flood hazard area. Everywhere else in the in the entire town is a preferred site. And in order to get a preferred site in one of those protection areas, they have to prove there's a real good reason and every part of your town plan comes into play. Now, on June 5th, the neighbors provided a reply brief to the to the P U C to be considered. It talks about orderly development, everything in the town plan, everything in the zoning ordinance that pertains to this, that does establish a clear written community standard. Now, that is what that's
Point of order, Jan, if we're gonna take this up and we're gonna have public testimony, once we reopen it, this might be appropriate. Until we take this up and reopen this, this is not appropriate. As a point of order, may we move forward? We're we are currently litigating or relitigating a case, an issue or issues that could be addressed to the extent this gets readdressed. I think this is completely inappropriate in the context of what we're talking about.
If I might just respond, what I'm trying to explain is the standard
Excuse me, Jan, I've addressed the chair of the planning commission and I would like to have the planning commission chair address me rather than be interrupted by whoever's speaking.
All right, Jeff, so I understand what you're saying and I am asking and will repeat that request to anyone who is speaking. We are speaking tightly to the agenda item of what has changed and what might be pertinent to reopening this. I do not want to go back through everything that happened since June 5th or June 29th or July 13th, 2021. This has been two full years. So I need it to be short and I need it to be to the point of whether we reopen laws or facts. And I don't want it to drag on.
If I could just wrap up.
Wait, Stuart, point of order. And I just, so people, points of order get precedent over content, which is why I'm letting those happen. Stuart?
So I think that what is being put forward is entirely relevant to whether we reopen or we don't reopen. And I think it's worth listening to. Because if there's substance that indicates that we should reopen, we should be paying close attention to what's being said. And although it's not being said in two sentences, I think it's worth listening to. So that's my that's my point and I would like to hear the further comments so that I can make an intelligent decision on this subject when I vote.
Yeah, my my point of order is predicated on what was decided by the planning commission with the ridge line consideration. To the extent we reopen this, then any of this, as you say, this history may be presented for us to consider. Otherwise, it's not material.
Right, I'm gonna, I'm going to let let this go forward a little bit more. I'm gonna ask that people stick to the subject. Chris, do you have something in the middle here before?
Well, yeah, because I actually wanted to ask you this and, but anyway, I want to just have you say one more time, my understanding is that in order to reopen this case, and maybe I should just have you restate it, but I just wanted to get it in my head. In order to reopen this, there had to be legal parameters that we felt or that we feel are relevant. And where I agree with Stuart is that I believe what I think Brooke, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, that Brooke was in essence, sort of alluding or saying that topic that there, that isn't, isn't what she is bringing up a legal parameter? Or how are we supposed to know? What are the legal parameters? That reopen this and I I that's why I'm just saying, I'm listening to her saying she's actually offering legal parameter.
So what I've said in my Jeff?
Yeah, so if if the if the legal parameters, the site plan changed, something changed, that that might be valid. If if there's some concern that there's some other element of the town plan we didn't consider, that might be valid. So keep it simple.
Right, and my my point, Chris, to the legal parameters are simply that what I stated in my introduction is what I summarized from talking with town council. So that that counts as part of our legal advice. So I would, I will let this continue. I would just ask participants to keep it short and to the point because I'm quite sure we have other people that want to speak. Brooke?
Thank you so much. I'll wrap up by saying so as it stands now, the preferred sites letter is before the P U C. And the neighbors are arguing there is good cause to ignore it because the facts put before the town were not what ended up being the petition and the site has changed drastically from one to another. And what the P U C will decide is whether you guys made a mistake. And if you did, they're going to ignore your position about it because they will find good cause. If they find good cause to overturn, either you didn't look at your whole town plan provisions or you were given the wrong information and it wasn't corrected later. So that's what we are arguing there and we anticipate, but no decisions have been made before anybody about the town plan not being adequate and we think there are very clear protections. So the last thing I will say is what do you have to lose to reopen this? It could give Norwich Solar Technologies more firepower to say, see, they looked at it again, they listened to all of it and they're the experts in their town plan and they say it still flies. And you or you could say, my gosh, this does impact people in a way that we don't allow under our town plan and we're rescinding the preferred sites letter. Has to be non arbitrary and not for discriminatory reasons. And that's what the P U C has said. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Mary Gorman?
Thanks, Jan. You said at the beginning that you can reopen if there are good and specific reasons. And something must have changed in the application. And we believe that that has happened. I think that at least from my perspective, it's very simple. You're the planning commission, and if you go back and look at all of the records, reviewed one plan that was not the plan that's getting built. You reviewed one view shed, that's not the view shed that's getting built. And and that's really quite simple. You were given instructions to look only at the ridge line. And if you read those transcripts, and I know many of you did, and I appreciate all the time people have put into them, you will see that you were told there's going to be, you will not be able to see anything. This will be 500 feet from Joy Kents's house and now it's 325. It's moved on a slope on the slope initially. So this plan has changed so dramatically. And so if you want to follow, you know, the idea that if there are good and valid reasons to go relook at it again, I think that that's really important. I would also say that as a neighbor, as part of the neighborhood group, we've been really trying to do our homework. We've been reading a lot. We've gotten transcripts from everything. We've tried to get, as you have, really smart about how this all works, et cetera. And I was really dismayed when I saw an email that was sent to Rod Francis that was not part of the Freedom of Information or there's a specific estate Vermont plan for that. We were not given all the information. We were given very highly redacted documents. And so I would also like to say that in terms of process, that needs to be redressed. Why did, why were not all documents put in? We now have you know, and now we're seeing new things for the first time. We are trying to be very transparent. We are trying to understand this complex situation. To us, it's very simple right now. You were given a plan and you were shown a watershed, a view shed. That's not what you're doing. And so all we would like you to do is look at exactly what they're planning to do and and go forward. And I would also say that it's very important to note that without your approval, this would not have gone to the P U C. This would not have gone to the Planning and Utility Commission. And this is causing just your neighbors, your citizens of the town, so much time and money and energy and heartache and et cetera, to to go and do all this work. And I would say that the planning in the 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 planning commission was not given the right information by the town to do the work it needs to do. It was not given the right information by Norwich Solar Technologies. You can see that in the in the transcript and I think that it's time that that's a good and valid reason to go back, rescind and take a good hard look at what exactly they plan to build. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Can I speak?
Michael Binder, yes.
There's some people locally, I'd like to speak at some point, Jan.
Yes. I'm sorry, yeah, you, please wave your hand from there. I I see you. Michael Binder and then it's Joel, right?
Thank you. I would like to point out something which I, if I understand from the reading, you, the planning commission has not considered, and that is the rare Jefferson salamanders, which are designated by the state as a species of special concern, species of greatest conservation need and high priority. They live in a vernal pool up on the site. And I'm not aware that you were, the planning commission was aware of this when they made their first when you gave the preferred sites letter. These amphibians need a 575 foot radius for their habitat and they exist there despite the fact the degradation caused by the transmission line. And I've heard it said by Norwich Solar Technologies that it's a good thing to collate these structures. And that might be true from an aesthetic point, if you take all these things, nobody wants to look at and put them in one place. But that's not the right way to preserve this rare species. The, as it turns out, Steve Ficaccio of Vermont Center for Eco Studies has done some very interesting studies in Vermont on this Jefferson salamander. And it turns out that the statutory 100 foot boundaries that Norwich Solar is proposing around this thermal pool will be good for the male salamanders, but not the females. They go way further out than 100 feet. And this additional degradation of their environment, in fact, probably the best part of their environment, the shallow headwater area that they proposed to put the array on, will probably make this population in this pond extinct over a period of years. That's all I want to say. If you didn't know about that at the time, I believe there's adequate protection for rare species in the Norwich Town Plan and I think that you should reconsider the salamanders and the impact that this project will have on their habitat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Joel?
Yeah, thank you very much, Jan, for all of your efforts. I appreciate all the efforts that you have put in. It's been noted before that there's been a lot of work done to try to come up to speed in terms of what has been an extensive and exhaustive process at the P U C. And I greatly appreciate the the clear summary that you provided. I did want to take just one second to provide a little bit more background since some of you know me and some of you don't. I'm Joel Stenheim. I'm president and co-founder of Norwich Technologies. I've lived in town for almost 20 years. Our kids went to Marion Cross and Hanover High School. My son is now just graduated, my youngest. We moved, I grew up across the river in Pinefield. We moved to this, we moved back to this area when our kids were young so we could be near my folks, but also so I could pursue a P H D at Dartmouth. When that was done, I started Norwich Technologies with Troy McBride. We started the company with a series of grants from the Department of Energy, working on renewable clean energy technology.
Jan, as a point of order, this is not material to our agenda item.
Thank you, Jeff.
A lot of material.
I have to agree, Joel. Can you, can you please move on?
All right, so the reason why I was placing that context is simply that as a company, we are committed to clean energy issues and we've been working globally and locally. And we've done a number of projects in the town. We've done a lot of residential systems and we've done a number of community systems. And that community system is what brings us here tonight. And as the record clearly demonstrates, there has been and continues to exist a robust process that is that has existed. And so the question that is before the planning convention now is whether or not this should be reopened. And I'd like to review a little bit of what has been stated because what has been stated is not correct. And so it's important, since others have made statements which are incorrect, that I have an opportunity to correct those misstatements so that the planning commission is making its decision in this case based on correct information.
So, so Jan, as a point of order, So, so Jan, as a point of order, if we open this hearing, then we can hear this like the attorney previously. At the end of the day, if there is a criterion uh, or criteria by which we may reopen this, which I don't think is the case, then I'd like to hear what those are. I don't care what's been said today about salamanders, vernal pools and so forth, even though that may be partially my realm of expertise. It has nothing to do with this agenda item. So it would be my goal, my desire to help us focus on the topic at hand, which was uh, the preferred sighting letter, how it was, how it was determined and is there a mechanism by which we can crack that open? And so far I haven't heard anything that suggests that's the case.
If I may speak, so in support of that, I'm speaking about the project.
Let me respond to Jeff, Joel, I, because I, I want, I want us to understand what we're trying to do. And I do think, Jeff, that there, there are two things that have been put on the table that are within the boundaries that I stated, which is something that has changed that might justify reopening. Um, and that is there was a statement of fact around different plans in play. Um, that, that the, that changed since we approved it. Uh, and I have things that I would say to that as well. I want Joel to, to speak to that, to be able to speak to that. Um, and to the degree that there is any change of law that was referenced, I, I am willing to let Joel respond to, to what we allowed, uh, Brooke to talk to. Joel, go ahead.
Yeah, the central contention really of, uh, the opponents of this project is that the is that the planning commission would not have issued the preferred site letter if they had not, if they had had the updated plan in their possession. And there's nothing in the record that supports this. In fact, everything in the record contradicts this. So there have been material misstatements of this. So as we said, and we put into our materials, uh, that were provided i- in preparation for this meeting, the, uh, same plan that was provided in the 45 day notice was provided to the planning commission. And first and foremost, um, it was also, uh, noted and that hasn't been recognized by the opponents that we came back to the planning commission. We updated the planning commission as to the change in the plan. And Jan, as you correctly identify, in your notes, uh, the planning commission, uh, was aware of this communication, acknowledged this communication and, uh, in fact, stated that Norwich Technologies provided details of an environmental review of the Upper Loveland Road project. There's been a minor adjustment to the location of the panels in response to the findings, but there will be no visual impact. So it's very clear that the planning commission had before it the plan that was part of the filing and that they were, they acknowledged that and that they chose not to take any further action. They were invited in the communication that Troy provided to the planning commission that if there were any questions, that they were free to ask us to return. And in the minutes that are, in, in the, in the meeting in which the minutes that for which this statement was made, there was a unanimous approval of those minutes that this was in fact, uh, what had transpired in the September 14th, uh, meeting. So I would say that the planning commission was aware of those shifts. And the fact is that there, uh, relatively minor shifts and the conclusion that they reached that this did not materially impact because they were, we provided an extensive, Troy provided, as the record shows, an extensive view shed analysis in which all of these, uh, factors were considered. So the planning commission did have an opportunity to consider all of the relevant material before it. And it did do that. And that view shed analysis was rigorous and it was noted that if there were any questions that we would update and we did provide that update. I would also notice, note, as was provided in the materials that we sent, that the planning commission, as was the select board, was then provided with the final plan and the full filing that included the aesthetic analysis, the environmental review, all of those material issues were provided to the planning commission and the select board as part of the official filing. And none of those facts have changed since that filing occurred. So I would also note that what was, so we have followed, there's, there is a formal process. We have followed that formal process, both with the planning commission, but also with the PUC. So I would note that before the PUC process, there was also a somewhat unusual step in which the opponents returned to the, and you note this, Jan, in your notes, so I very much appreciate this. The, the select board meeting on February 23rd included extensive correspondence and discussion of this issue. And it's, it's incontrovertible that the whole select board had before it the final plan and all the materials. They had the full application before them. And there was extensive discussion and the uh, select board chose not to take any action after the review. And as there was testimony a few weeks ago where Bob Geir, who was on the select board, commented that he himself, as did many members of that select board, took that review seriously. So the, the, uh, opponents of this process have had their opportunity to revisit this. And as Bob Geir said, he took his review seriously. He went and looked at the array from numerous places around town and concluded that the view of the array was limited. So these points have been reviewed. So this is just with the planning commission and the select board. But it's crucial to note that that's just the beginning of what has been an exhaustive process. And as Jan noted, this has been going on for over a year and a half. So the idea that the opponents have not had an opportunity to have their day in court is absolutely not correct. They have, as is their right, availed themselves fully of the opportunity to make any and all of these points before the Public Utilities Commission. And the Public Utilities Commission, and fortunately, the planning commission, while it has an opportunity to participate in that process, does not require to because the state has set up a process in which there are experts who are well informed and deal with this on a daily basis to uh, run what is, has been an exhaustive process. There have been hundreds and pages of documents. And this has gone on for a year and a half. There have been evidentiary hearings. There's been testimony. And all of this has been conducted under the auspices of the Public Utilities Commission and the Department of Public Service.
Right.
And I would note that
Thank you, Joel. Can you wrap up, please?
Sure. And I would note that the Department of Public Service, who is, uh, um, uh, they're charged with being the public advocate. Their role is to represent the public good. And I think that the reason why we are here again now is because recently they have decided that the, the Department of Public Service has determined that they feel that a certificate of public good is warranted in this case. They have reviewed all of the evidence before them, all the, all the factors that the, uh, opponents have tried to bring. And they've concluded that, uh, um, a certificate of public good is warranted in this case. So we are now at the point where the PUC can make their decision. They are now at the point where we, uh, at the end of what has been an exhaustive process. And so what you are being asked to do is upend that process. We have followed all the procedures throughout the entire process. We have allowed, the PUC process allows us and allows the opponents to make all of their, uh, uh, arguments. And we are now at the end of that process. The opponents have had a year and a half with these same set of facts to come back before you. And I would say that the reason that they're coming before you now, because they don't want the PUC process to conclude. And what we're asking you is because we follow the process all the way along. It's been a robust process. Any assertions that people have not had an opportunity to make these points is simply not true. They made these same mischaracterizations of the record that I've just clarified here, and that was, uh, properly, uh, reviewed and decided by the department. But what I would say is that what we should do now is not reopen this because to reopen this would completely upend and waste all of that valuable resources and time that have been dedicated to coming to an appropriate resolution of this. We don't know if the PUC will in our favor. But we are comfortable allowing, we want the process to just conclude.
All right. Thank you, Joel. I'm, I'm going to try and nip this off. I would ask I think we got an echo somewhere. I would ask people who have spoken before, who are going to speak again to not repeat themselves. And if you've got something new to say to the points, I must agree with, with Jeff that we're trying to limit this down to the agenda item and what has changed. Uh, I'm gonna let Stuart speak as a commission member and then uh, go from there shortly.
I'd like to, uh, read from an email that Joel wrote me. We've been in contact. What he said in conclusion to, uh, an email was, as mentioned above, we agree with the general proposition that the planning commission and select board can review issued preferred site letters with the question being, what is the standard of review? So he may feel that this particular issue should not be reviewed, but it certainly is reviewable should we decide to review it. We have on the record what Vince alluded to before and what you, Jan, are aware of in terms of the reviewability uh, of any of these decisions by the planning commission and the select board. And so Joel agreed with that. I think it's, I think it's, I mean, I know that it's reviewable should we decide to review it. And I, again, I think that we would be remiss if we did not review it. Thank you.
I would, I, thank you, Stuart. I would just like to restate, uh, what, um, I said before, very simply, something must, something material must change to justify reopening. And I think it is an important point that is not something must have changed since July 13th, 2021. I think it is valid to look at the entire process, certainly through when the application was deemed complete, which was December 21. And so all of the opportunities the planning commission had with full information in hand through that period, I take it as the responsibility of the planning commission. I will certainly do that going forward that if something changes and we want to look at it again, we bring it up. So I, I pictured the planning commission in September of 2021 as being perfectly empowered to revisit. And if they did not, that is an important statement about change and what has changed and what has not. So I do not want to dwell on what was happening only July 13th, 2021. Uh, with that, I will give Brooke a few more minutes, uh, and then Aaron. Brooke?
Uh, having, uh, you just say that, then this may not be that important to you, but
Stuart, can you mute?
Um, but you know, the agenda packets are the important places to look. I don't know about this, this June email that went to the town administrator. It wasn't, that site plan was not in your packets. It wasn't until September that you ever saw something like that and it was only in correspondence. That was a month after the advance notice was filed. And that's when you got an email that said, uh, here's a little cut out piece of the site plan. It's really no different. Now, that was months after the situation and it was represented, there was no change in visibility and that is not true. And the other issue is that the actual petition plan was plan, what's being called Plan D is even far more different. Unless the planning commission has on record at a meeting that they looked at the stuff that was submitted at the PUC and they reviewed it and said, oh, we understand and we're sticking to our guns. Um, and what we're doing is asking you folks, instead of letting the PUC decide whether you, there's good cause to ignore your position about it, why don't you just take a second look? You have nothing to lose and an awful lot of people who will be satisfied if you listen to the substance. Just figure out if you made a mistake or if you were misrepresented information because 170 feet we believe is material.
We have heard, we have heard those arguments. Thank you.
Hey.
Aaron?
Hi, I'm Aaron Laberty. I live in Norwich. I am, uh, uh, can you hear me? I'm sorry. And I know I have a bad internet connection.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, uh, I am a party to the, uh, the action at the PUC as in the butter. I grew up on that hill. Um, I have stated before, this is an excellent site. I know that's not relevant to what you're discussing now. What is relevant is that I have been in a party to this, unlike the PUC, which could have been a party to this, uh, this PUC action. I have been a party and I have followed it through and it's tiredly. I've read every, uh, uh, everything that's been posted and there has been no substantive change. There have been minor changes like there would be in any such project. And, uh, most of what the, uh, or all of what the, uh, uh, opposition has put forward has been thoroughly reviewed by the PUC, discussed and, uh, commented on and adjud- uh, uh, adjudicated in a, in a, in a substantive way. So there is, there is simply no basis for, um, for the PUC to, to, to essentially bait and switch uh, Norwich Technologies on this. They, the PUC has had plenty of opportunity and, um, to, I mean, the, the planning commission has had plenty of opportunity to review this and there is simply no reason at this point, other than as Joel pointed out, the fact that likely the PUC is going to rule soon and the opposition wants to delay. That there is no substantive reason. There is no substantive change. This is a good project in an appropriate site. And I think it's shortsighted of the opposition to oppose this project when, uh, the land was for sale and likely much more than eight acres would have been disturbed. And, and this, no one would have looked at that vernal pool if, uh, if a different sort of project had been uh, cited there. And this is an excellent use of that land, probably the highest use of that land at this point in the administration.
All right, thank you. Stuart, point of order?
So I'd like to have full disclosure. Mr. Laberty has said that he's in the butter. Does he benefit from this project going forward? Does he have a financial interest?
That is not pertinent to what we're talking about.
Of course, of course not. I have a property that is adjacent.
No. Jan, as a point of order, we need to move on. We have, we have someone to testify.
I understand that. So we are going to move on. We have one person in the room, I will ask, and then Michael Binder, if you have something new to add. I know, I know. First, we will take a, a person in the room. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but go ahead.
Joy Kents.
Okay.
I just want to talk about changes because there were changes to the plans and they were substantial. The plan, when, when, uh, we first learned about this June 20, I think it was the June 29th letter, um, to suppose, to, uh, to Rod Francis and, uh, Bert Durfee. Uh, and from, uh, the solar company saying, uh, including, it was the result of the Arrowood. I believe that was the Arrowood project. And, um, it was a change in the, or no, that was included, sorry, included, I'm sorry, it included this map, which we are calling Plan C. Right? That never entered the public record at all. We have tried to find it. Rod Francis never handed it over to the planning commission on, for that July 13th meeting. I have looked at the whole videotape of that meeting, at the, um, agenda, at the, um, packet of materials for that meeting and also the, um, uh, the minutes after that. And at no time, at no time is this plan, is this plan ever discussed. It is not reviewed by the commission. It was not approved by the commission. What the commission looked at was a variant of the first plan that had been sent out on May 6. And it looks like, this is the May 6th. I don't have a color card copy of the, 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 what we were calling the, um, a Plan B, which shows the view shed analysis, right? That view shed analysis is of a variant of this, not this. And the differences between this variant of A and this are significant. Because in this plan and in the view shed analysis, there is no impact whatsoever on the ridge line. The project is set significantly back and repeatedly Troy McBride, his, 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 all of his his, all of his graphics and the photographs have arrows pointing that the project will be over the ridge behind these trees. In other words, one of those trees are going to come down. And, 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 and no, uh, no, no impact would be on the, on the, uh, on the steep slope that descends from that ridge. So what happened in the whole course of that meeting? And if you go back and look at that videotape, you will see this. He does not mention this plan. And, um, and everybody at that meeting, there's some discussion about, I think you had raised some issues at that meeting. Um, I think about.
Joy, Joy, I'm going to have to ask you to step up. We're, we're going over things we have heard multiple times before.
Okay, so the point is, is that that meeting did not discuss that plan, which had substantial changes. And then when it went to the select, and then the very next day, the forty five day advance notice did this and sent this plan out, Plan C, that you, this committee had not reviewed and had not discussed and had not approved. It did not include this one, the variant of this. That's what the view shed analysis was about. And the same process ended up at the Select Board.
Understood. I believe that, that everyone who has reviewed the packet has seen the variety of plans and understands that, that point of discussion. I would like to, uh, Michael, I would just urge you to say whatever you have, if it is a new point, to say it quickly and then Linda, and then I will wrap to the commission.
Thank you. I will be very brief. I want to point out that, uh, the Planning Commission, the Select Board and the Regional Planning Commission are independent. The Planning Commission is not advisory to the Select Board on this matter. You can each have your own say. The Planning Commission can reject the letter and the, uh, Select Board can approve the letter or vice versa. Um, and as far as to, uh, whether or not, uh, you have reconsidered these things, uh, I've heard it said that, um, the Select, Planning Commission has been kept informed of all these changes. But if you haven't debated these changes and opened the level and reconsidered these changes, it's irrelevant. Correspondence means nothing. What will mean something is when you reopen this matter and then hear these correspondences, you know, in a deliberative manner. Thank you very much.
All right, Michael, thank you. I'm gonna let Linda speak and then we're gonna close on this, just in the commission.
Yeah, we have, we have others in the audience.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see them. So let's, let me, we'll start with Linda and then we'll, we'll go from there. But I, I do want to be cognizant of the time and I need people to be brief and I need people to stick to the agenda item.
Thank you. I will be very brief. Linda Gray, I'm a Norwich resident and I want to acknowledge I am a supporter of the solar project. I would like to see it built. My, the point that I want to share with you all is because I would like to see it built, I've been monitoring the discussions at the Select Board in here. And I've been in touch with the, uh, Regional Planning Commission and can confirm from them that they, that they are one of the three entities that approved the preferred site letter from their perspective. They say there is no change. They see no reason to consider rescinding their support for preferred site. Thank you.
And I would just, uh, in the interest of, of accuracy, that, uh, we spoke, uh, Jeff and I spoke with Peter Gregory at the Two Rivers Commission last week. And that is an accurate statement of what Peter said. They see no reason to reopen this from the regional commission's point of view. Okay?
My name's Jen Goulet. I'm a resident of Norwich and, um, I'm one of the neighbor interveners and in my opinion, these are the changes. First of all, the site went from two to three acres to eight point two acres. It also moved significantly closer to our houses. They're going to cut down trees on the ridge line and then down the slope towards our houses. Yesterday we got over two inches of rain. This could have a significant safety impact on our residences, right? So yeah, that's the thing. It is closer to our residences. They're clear cutting trees on the ridge line, right above our houses. And it's much, much bigger. I'll tell you, I was in favor of the first plan. It was supposed to be two to three acres. I was all for it. It was supposed to be up under the power lines. Way to go. Um, I'm pro solar. But I don't want anything to happen in my house. It's an investment and it's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, I'm gonna pull this back in. Do we have, okay, we have one more just to. All right, one more, one more in the public and then we will go into the commission. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Signet Taylor. I first want to thank you all for your time and service. I'm grateful for it. It's pretty amazing that you're willing to do this. Um, I am married to Joel Stettenheim. And I am here just to very quickly say that I'm in support of the project and don't think it should be reopened. And part of that reason that I chose to come today is because what happened yesterday with the rain and the flooding and climate change being very, very present here in Norwich, Vermont and the rest of Vermont. And that this project is both a very small project in a global sense, but also a very large one. Because we are facing a climate crisis and the only way that our planet will survive is if decisions are made to enable renewable energy.
I know.
And I, I know.
I will, I will. I'm, I'm agree, I will agree with Jeff. Point of order, we need to stick to the agenda. All right, thank you. I will pull it back into the commission now. I think we have heard both sides. Uh, and, uh, Jeff, if you want to start and then I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, so, um, uh, you know, the, the Glays are near and dear to my heart, uh, for a variety of reasons. Uh, we live close by. I may agree with their concerns, but what I think in this context is not relevant. Uh, the, the facts are from my standpoint reasonably well laid out by what Joel said with respect to what, uh, what was presented to the Planning Commission. And I objected at the time of the presentation, not with Norwich Solar, but with, uh, the direction that our Select Board, our leadership, uh, on the Select Board and Planning Commission, along with, uh, one or two staff members had brought us to. Nonetheless, at the time, uh, I expressed my objection to, uh, wh- what our leadership brought us to by abstaining. I expressed concerns about wetlands, for instance, and Rod Francis reasonably corrected me and said, that's not on the table. Nonetheless, uh, Dory Barton, who's an excellent, uh, and, uh, wetland delineator, environmental, uh, person with Arrowhead, uh, did facilitate final delineations, which modified the, uh, the project nominally. Having said that, I, I can't say sitting here, because I saw various iterations through, uh, uh, the December twenty one, uh, filing. I, I can't tell you whether I looked them up online, whether it being circulated at the town level. Uh, but I saw various iterations and the question before us routinely was, does the change proposed uh, affect, uh, the, the ridge line consideration? The view of this, uh, location, as Rod Francis stated. Uh, and I appreciate, I, I don't know who gave us the minutes from, uh, uh, from the meeting, but, uh, minute thirty nine, thirty three. Uh, Rod Francis told me really clear, but my memo made really clear that the scope of the Planning Commission's review is to do, is to do with whether you can reach a conclusion that the visual impact has been minimized from the vantage points of public state highways, the interstate town, in-town highways. I completely agree with the impacts on the abutters, but that's not in the town plan. I'm concerned and, and, uh, have the same concerns that the abutters have, but that's not what our regulations say. And if I back up, uh, a, a little bit before that, uh, that was on page fifteen of what we were given. I just want to go back to page twelve where, uh, at the bottom of page twelve, uh, yeah, I talk about my ambivalence toward the ridge line issue, talking about ledge. Uh, you know, that I've hiked or jogged this area and then led into some wetland consideration, uh, wetland considerations and was reasonably corrected about that. And for the record, I, I don't know how many times I've been over that ridge. It's probably not two hundred. It may not be four hundred. I don't think it's five hundred, but I've been on that ridge a ton of times because I've lived there for a lot of years. Uh, and then the paragraph before that where I note what Ernie said and read the whole paragraph. I would have to see them on the fields that have been turned from, let's say pasture to something. I'm, I'm comfortable with this. We were in the midst of a debate about how we're going to address this project with respect to the, the regulations and town plan that we were handed. Uh, I, and I believe that Ernie commiserated with my concerns, but nonetheless, he voted in favor of it and noted his comfort based on the fact that the rules were what they were at the time. Uh, I, I want to go on to say, among other things, I do appreciate the concerns expressed with respect to Vernal Pools, Salamanders and other things. I'm not saying that I don't care about those issues. That's not the case at all. They are not material simply with respect to what our regulations say. So all of that said, I haven't seen anything in the history or the packet, all this current information with tons more reading that leads me to believe that there's been any material change that's going to affect, uh, the, uh, the, the bottom line issue, which is the visual impact, uh, from, uh, public state highways, interstate or town highways. Uh, even though I think that, that there have been some nominal iterations in, uh, in where the arrays are proposed.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I would make a couple of points, uh, as, not as chair, to, but to the content of this, my personal feelings. Um, I think we are in an unfortunate situation. And Chris said that at the beginning. We are, we have a, a context of state law that gives us certain abilities to influence what goes on in our town. The tool we have to do that with is the town plan. Because of the town plan we are dealing with, it is a very weak and vague tool. Uh, and therefore is, uh, is very difficult to use to be specific and really, uh, control what happens in the town. Um, to the point of what plan was, which plan was seen when, uh, and something having to be in the minutes of the Planning Commission to be, uh, to count as being viewed, I, I simply cannot agree with that. I believe that we had staff, we had staff review things, we had official documents sent. Uh, we were parties to a forty five day notice that sent out official plans and the final plans. The Planning Commission simply cannot say, oh, uh, that, that it didn't come up at a meeting, so we aren't responsible. That didn't count as approving it. I think the Planning Commission had ample opportunity to see the plans all the way through the final plan and by not explicitly bringing them up, uh, that is approving and that has not changed since then. Uh, so in my mind, we, if we reopen this, we will have the same vague town plan tool. We will not be able to do anything different than we did previously. And I would rather spend the, this group's time to do the work to amend the town plan that allows us to have specific control and statements about what this town wants and doesn't want. Uh, because the tool that we have in the context of state law, um, it hasn't changed and we're not going to be able to do anything different by reopening it. That's my opinion on this. Chris?
Agree a hundred percent with you. However, I, again, I'm sure about the legalities of this, but Jen Goulet just came out and said she's a proponent of solar. They stuck to the original plan or it didn't cross over the ridge line. She would have been satisfied and perhaps some of the other neighbors would have, but the plans did in fact change. So my question again to the board is, does reopen, doesn't necessarily rescind it, but I still would like to know if that, if there is a possibility that reopening it allows some amending as to say, okay, the plan, Plan A was only going to cut, my understanding, when I saw the June twenty ninth letter to the Planning Commission, which by the way, did not make it into the packet. And that bothers me because I, I read very thoroughly. Um, and it, I believe in that letter, I, if I stand corrected, I believe it actually talked about cutting six acres of, of woods down. So I think that the neighbors are rightfully, have right to be concerned because the preferred site letter was based on information that the Planning Commission, and I, I agree with you, I, I, I do totally agree with what you just said, but this comes back to my question, the preferred site letters. I, again, the parameters are very confusing to me because if, if the includes that sufficient and accurate information is handed to a, an official body. To me, that's a legal parameter. So if the body was not given accurate information to me, it does make you wonder why was the preferred site letter signed off on. So I go back to, my question is, is there a way to reopen this and try and come to a conclusion that perhaps N S T and the neighbors could come to an agreement to make everybody a little bit happy? Because I agree with, I agree with Jan. Based on the findings of the PUC, this is going to be an uphill battle. So I'm asking everybody, this is a time where we can say reopen it and, and try and work something out. Because otherwise.
So, yeah, I mean, Chris, I think I, I hear you and in, in a, you know, in a more sort of, um, uh, mundane world or a collegial place where, 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 as Joel said, and I have to agree with him, we are at the, the tail end of a two-year process with a very specific plan that has been on the table, uh, for a year and a half. Um, and I must, I must, uh, say again that I really feel the Planning Commission over the course of twenty twenty one, from July until December, had just cannot say they didn't see a plan and didn't have an opportunity to bring it up if they wanted to. That, that to me is, is an irresponsible statement. I wouldn't stand for us doing that in the future to say, oh, wait a minute, we had our chance and, and we didn't look at it. We want to go back. So, um, I, I hear you, Chris. I'd like to be able to be informal and, and open this up in a friendly fashion. I don't think those are the legal parameters we're being, you know, done here. If, if we reopen it, the, it's not a re, if we take away the preferred sighting letter, the whole thing collapses and, and you're back to square one and, and it's, it's very messy.
So wait, wait, can I just ask you again, is reopening it actually the same thing as rescinding or is just?
No.
Putting just.
Reopening, reopening is not rescinding. Um, but it, it then starts, uh, uh, you know, it starts a very time consuming process on, at the Planning Commission. And, um, may get to where it's a rescind or a change, but it's, it's not a, it doesn't open the door for a friendly, informal trading of, or changing of the plan. Uh, there's just, I mean, you think about the investment of, in the specific plan that Norwich Solar has made. I don't see how they can be expected to, to tweak things at the eleventh hour, uh, you know, in a, in a friendly sort of debate. I just, I just don't think we're at that stage. But that, I'll stop. That, that's my opinion. Other commission members, Ernie.
Yeah, um, my concern is seeing, um, a solar installation with sort of a, a, sort of a cloud hanging over it. Um, and that's what I feel if we don't, if we don't reopen it at least for some discussion or something. This, this, this is going to end up putting a bad taste in some people's mouths. And I don't want to see solar, solar energy get that kind of a bad rap. There's, there's too much at stake to let that happen. Um, so that I'm more in favor of finding a way to make it so that there's a way to make, you know, some kind of an installation happen. there's a way to make, you know, some kind of an installation happen, but also find a way to make the, the people that are uncomfortable with this particular arrangement. I mean, I, I, I remember very clearly being told it was going to be three acres and it was going to be part, you know, it was sort of going to be built into the brownfields area of, of the transmission lines. And then the next time we're discussing it, we're, we're talking about somewhere that's in a, in a, in a, in a field with trees being cut down and so on and so forth. And I felt like, kinda, I, I don't want to, you know, put too much of a a, a point on this, but I felt kind of betrayed because I was happy, very happy with, with the brownfield approach. I, I totally believe that's how solar should be done in general is where things are already sort of blighted. But, you know, I can understand why the, why the neighbors are, are concerned here and I would like to see that concern alleviated.
Jeff?
Yeah, as a reader of plans, again, I don't think anything's changed and I've expressed the same concerns over and over again, like the abutters and was properly corrected with respect to what our rules allow. So the bad taste that it's, was in my mouth and perhaps is in my mouth, if I use Ernie's language, relates to what has been, I, I, I don't want to be unkind, just because I don't agree with John Pepper, Roger Harald or Claude Ambrochou or, you know, past, past planning commission chair, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't undermine their intentions and I can't speak to this. I've expressed over and over and over again, concerns about paradigm that we're in to all of those folks in my own ways, which have led to a situation like this. I, I'm not, I'm not in any way undermining a butter concerns or Norwich Solar concerns, but I don't see any opportunity to open this. There's certainly no opportunity to, to suggest in Norwich Solar, they revised the plan, et cetera. That's, it's a, it's more than the 11th hour.
May I ask the question, please? From the public, Joy Kenson?
What you want to ask? Yes, a quick question.
Kenson from the, from the audience, Jan wants to be heard.
Yes, a question?
I would like to note in that first plan, again, like Jen, it didn't bother me because it was set so far back. But when you have another plan that now tears trees down, takes, cuts, clear cuts trees on the ridge line and almost a third of the way down a steep slope with at some places a 35% incline and below that a 67, 60% incline, we have a real concern for our homes. We already experienced flooding and we're getting it now again after the recent, this recent rainfall, this, these last couple of weeks. What happens to us? What recourse do we have? If our homes are damaged and what happens when the trees are, which are on this, on this, on this ledge are loosened and fall? These are 60 to 90 foot trees that can collapse on our homes. No study was done of what happened beneath the limit of disturbance on that steep slope and how it would impact us. We have real concerns about what's going to happen to our properties and what will happen even to our lives. It seems to me that it's, we, we become expendable and that this can go on and so much, where do we go? What is our recourse for this? That's why we've come back apart to look this over and to consider what will happen, what will the impact be on the rest of the slope and on us?
I'm sorry, Jan, these things, I know this is out of order a little bit, but because there are these statements that are happening about the.
Hey, Jan, I'm going to, I'm gonna need, I'm sorry.
These statements that are now, I'm hoping not to be, Jan, point of order.
Jeff, I'll take.
Yeah, so if I may, I, I understand that there was an abutter that expressed some concerns that are not material to the agenda item before us, whether they're accurate or not, it's not material. Having said that, I would hope the planning commission could move forward, call the question if necessary to get to a place where we vote on this and, and either, either let Stuart's motion or don't.
I will, I have to, I have to agree with Jeff that, that we need to close this. Stuart, just a second, I would like, I would ask either Vince or Bob if they have anything to say, since they have not spoken yet this evening. And then I'll consider calling the question.
I think you've addressed most of my questions specifically in your statements. I appreciate it.
Okay, Vince?
I think we've covered everything. I think generally, I think everyone can agree that this wasn't what we, what it was started with, but we have concerns about it, what, how, it seems just like there's not a whole lot that can be done as far as the planning commission goes with the tools that are given.
Yeah, I, I think just, I would reiterate Jeff's point or to, to Ernie's language that, you know, the bad taste that we are being forced to swallow, say, is that we have a town plan and a set of instruments that give us a very limited set of abilities to do anything. I absolutely hear the abutters concerns and I am in sympathy with that. I am dealing with it from the point of view of the legalities of this planning commission with the town plan that we have. And to my mind, that means that it won't change if we open it because it's the same tool. Stuart?
I'd like to hear what Brooke Dingeldine has to say and then I would like to make a comment.
I will, I, I, I have to, I have to keep that if, if we open it again, we're going to spiral around here and I don't, I do not see what new information is going to come in. That is my concern. We, we have seen this, not even counting the P U C. This planning commission has heard these arguments over and above what it takes to reopen. So I would very much not like to hear that again. Stuart, do you have a comment?
Ernie has.
Yeah, yeah, let Ernie go first and then I will perhaps wrap this up.
Okay, Ernie?
I just wanted to make a, a suggestion that based on, you, you just said something that triggered this. It might be really wise if, if considering our town plan and its weakness and, and so on, that a postmortem of this issue and our town plan be high up on our, our upcoming agendas. Because I think this is emblematic of, of why there's been a big change in the planning commission.
I, I agree completely, Ernie, that I, that the message I take from this is that we have our work cut out for us and the job is to be able to have the kind of conversations between landowners, solar advocates, where in town, very specifically do you put preferred sites? Get rid of it. We are the only town in the state that has a default preferred solar across the whole town, except for a couple of overlay. That's, you know, we need to look at our town plan. And that's what I would rather spend our time doing, but that is, that's my feeling on this. Stuart? Brooke, I'm not going to open this up again. Sorry.
Even though, I, I just wanted to quickly respond to what one of the gentlemen said about.
It's a point of, it's a point of order, Jan.
But, but he keeps saying that your town plan, all you can do is look at the visibility of this and that is not.
I'm sorry, Brooke. I understand your point and I hear Jeff when he says it in a limited way, but I would then add to that, that if I look at the aesthetic criteria that was you, were used in three different studies that are in front of the P U C, they look at steep slopes, they look at the, the wetlands. This, it was not limited to ridge line and visibility and scenic in the reviews that were done. So I, I agree with you that it is broader than that and I would say that that has been looked at broader than that. So that's.
You're only talking about aesthetics. I'm talking about orderly development.
Development was also addressed. I'm going to have.
Right, but let me, let me just, let me say one sentence, please.
Brooke, we're done.
Because I just want to say you're prejudging it and that's a deprivation of due process. You have been given material information.
Reasonable, we have a member of the audience talking over the planning commission and acting out of order. You've, you've essentially said, we're going to address this. So let's call the question and move this on.
I'd like to make my last comment.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Stuart speak and then we're gonna take a vote.
So my interpretation of the town plan, and I was heavily involved in the passage of the town plan, is I'm afraid different than yours, Jan. We had a, we, I don't know, we must have had about 250 signatures of people who wanted to reject the town plan and this, this is off point really, but it's on point in the sense that what was passed, again, one man's opinion and it's different from yours. I do believe it does protect the things that we're talking about. And I think that the, one of the reasons that I think that this should be revisited is the town plan does authorize a revisitation of what was passed. And it was, it, it should be revisited because there is a difference of opinion, obviously, between what site plan was proposed and what site plan was accepted. And I think we need to look at that closely and try and make a judgment as to where, what, if anything, we ought to do about that. And again, it's concerning and you've, you've acknowledged, Jeff has acknowledged, everybody has acknowledged that, that there are abutters who are concerned. And their concerns sound to me to be legitimate. And to ignore those concerns and not take another look at this is, I think, is something that a planning commission, a town authorized planning commission ought to do. We should take another look and make sure that the original judgment was correct. And I'm not arguing for or against anything here. All I'm saying is that, that it makes, to me anyway, it makes good sense to have a second look. So, you know, and I'm sorry if that differs from your opinion, but.
You are free to have an opinion that differs from my opinion. I, my, my feeling, I'm certainly not ignoring the feelings of the landowners. I think we are in a very unfortunate situation where to, to a great degree, our hands are tied and our best efforts, in my opinion, should be put into making a town plan with some teeth in it that does some hard work to answer these questions so that the next time this comes up, we have legal basis to stand on. With that, I would like to call the question. So we'll vote. This is, this is to Stuart's motion.
The motion repeated, please.
Yeah, Vince?
Sure. It was, the motion was to reopen, let me see if I can find it specifically, been a while.
Uh, yes.
I will, I can paraphrase or I can state what I believe it said is to reopen the preferred sighting letter of the Upper Loveland Solar Project. Ernie, second.
With a special meeting.
Special meeting.
Two weeks.
Two weeks from today. Okay, that is the motion on the table. Going to call a vote. Stuart, how do you vote?
Reopen, please.
That's a yes, yes is reopen, no is not. Jeff, how do you vote?
Nay.
Bob?
No.
Vince?
No.
Ernie?
Aye.
Chris?
Yay.
Chris is a yes and I am a no. That's four to three. We will not reopen. I thank everyone for their comments and their work. I, as I said, this is not satisfactory from my point of view. This points to some of the reasons why I accepted appointment to the planning commission to try and work on some of these issues. I am in no way ignoring landowners' concerns. What I would like to do is work to make the town plan useful for all the landowners in town moving forward in a way that's legally binding. So thank you for that. I am going to, Stuart?
I'm wondering whether we, whether we can for the next meeting, regardless of when that meeting occurs, whether we can put something on the agenda to address that could describe as imperfections with the town plan. I just think, you know, you've said that, that you think that the town plan needs improvement. Like especially on this particular issue, there are other issues I that are out there as well. But if we were to make a start at least and try and correct this, I, I think that it would go a long way.
I, yeah, I agree. I would just, to, to point to the agenda and I'm aware of time and I want to, to close on, close on that and I would like to, to make the direct linkage to item six on the agenda, the planning commission work plan priorities. And I would like to make a statement very publicly to the, to the landowners and to everyone concerned here that, that the town planning commission puts very high on its list of priorities to, to look specifically at the sighting process, the preferred solar, the, the, and it's the energy chapter of the town plan, but as it relates to solar sighting, I would point out that in February of 22, when this was brought up again to the select board, Marsha Callaway made a motion to put on the select board's agenda the issue of sighting process for solar projects. Her motion died for one of a second. I would like to put that at the top of this group's priority list in the interest of showing that we think it's important and we believe fixing the town plan is the right mechanism for us to hear everybody and to get it in a place where we can do something about it. I just, I, I leave that as a comment for the agenda for the next meeting. Jeff?
Yeah, given the hour, Jan, I would largely like to say if we, or ask if we can kick the agenda into our next meeting with whatever other items we may discuss. I, I appreciate what you said about item six because we have a ton of priority issues and elements of the town plan, among other things to address. I, I, I would like to make one quick comment looking forward, if the, if the commission is willing to kick everything forward, so to speak. In our dialogue with Peter Gregory as a quick update, among other things, he had provided a proposal to assist the town to Jackie Allen, which he forwarded to Jan and I, which I would like to ask you to forward to the commission, have that be included in our next, our next session as well. And he also said that he would be willing, I think in August, to come down with Kevin Geiger to talk to the commission about how the RPC can help us, given, given where we are with limited access to what appears to be any planning or zoning files and our desire to move forward and get some actual work done.
Yes, and just to expand on that from the conversation with Peter, the, the proposal that he gave to Jackie was specific, I believe, to, to zoning regulations and looking, helping look at the zoning regulations. What he offered to do in August, which I would support, is to come and talk to us about a more holistic, to say, okay, here, let's look through the town plan. How does, you know, where is it, where is it weak, where is it not? Do what you wanted to do. What is the process for amendment? And the zoning regs and the subdivision regs, look at it holistically and then talk about how the regional commission could help us with whatever priorities we come up with. Chris?
So I actually found one of the most fascinating. So I actually found one of the most fascinating parts of, of my weekend reading was that the P U C has essentially told us what we need to update. Uh, they, by, um, and I'm sorry to use you guys as an example, um, in this particular unfortunate situation that when we go to look at the town plan and, and review preferred sites, the Cuiji test, we need to start, the town plan obviously needs to keep up with things like the Cuiji test and, and work around obvious things that the P U C is looking at. And I was really upset to see that our maps, they said, are outdated. Um, language, the specificity is lacking. Um, and in a way, if everybody just sort of, you know, I read it. It wasn't that easy. Um, just looking at how the P U C is going to be looking at preferred or, or a two, how the P U C looks at two, four, eight, to me is a roadmap to where, where the dam broke for us.
I, yes, I agree. I think the point is this, it's the state that has given the leverage and essentially the lever, the tool to use to have influence on the process. And so we need to look at how to make that tool better. All right, Jeff?
Yeah, is an emotion to adjourn appropriate?
I would, uh, I would take a motion to adjourn. If there's no objection to a motion to adjourn, I will take one.
I moved.
So, there's a second. All right, everybody, uh, anyone in favor? I'm gonna, anyone opposed to adjourn? I don't need a roll call for adjournment. Any opposition to adjournment? All right. Thank you very much, everyone. And we've got our work cut out for us. Let's, let's take it in order and see what we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.